Everyone, thank you for coming. It is 7:00 PM and I call the April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five School Board Meeting to order. The Holman Board of Education and the School District of Holman acknowledge that our schools are located on the ancestral homelands of the Ho-Chunk, Sauk and Fox and Dakota peoples. We celebrate and honor these lands and their sacred significance to indigenous peoples. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board Clerk Maggie Smith, would you please call the roll?
Barb Bunch.
Here.
Keven Zilke.
Here.
Jennifer Deek.
Here.
Kadija Islam.
Here.
Chris Lau.
Here.
Lindsay Need.
Excused.
Maggie Smith, here. Bridget Todd Robbins.
Here.
With six of the seven board members present, I declare a quorum. I note that the agenda has been posted, distributed and sent to the local media. With this in mind, are there any changes to this agenda? I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
So moved.
Chris has moved.
Second.
Maggie has seconded to approve the agenda as published. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as published, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion to approve the published agenda has passed. We do not have any published participation this evening. Moving on to the district administrator's report. Dr. Mueller.
Yeah, first, I just want to thank our staff and our students. We had a wonderful prom this past weekend and went very well and sounded like the students got on the dance floor and had a good time. So I look forward to learning more, even when you report out. Anyways, also, in March, in all of our buildings, we had a second lockdown drill. So you'll find in your packets the after-action report and that. I will note that each time we do it, we kind of go to that next level. And you'll notice in many of these reports that it wasn't, they were in many different types of locations and different types of situations that happened. So we continue to work hard on our safety in the school district. So I wanted you to know that. And lastly, I just think it's really important to take a moment to talk about the elections on April first. First, congratulations to our incumbents, Barb and Kadija, in that for being re-elected onto the board. But also, we had our operational referendum and while we were disappointed for our operational referendum that it did not pass by ninety votes in that, we remain committed to our mission of providing the best possible education for our students. You know, these are tough and challenging times ahead and difficult decisions will need to be made. However, what will not change is our dedication to the students, families and community who make the School District of Holman a great place to learn and grow. Without the additional funding, we're going to face significant challenges maintaining the level of educational excellence our community comes to expect. The reality is that we will have to continue to carefully evaluate how we allocate our resources, knowing that reductions are going to be necessary. This will impact academic programs, curricular resources, our ability to maintain updated instructional materials and technology. It will also affect our ability to keep up with facility maintenance and remain competitive and attracting and retaining high-quality staff. Despite these challenges, we will continue to move forward and do what is right for our kids. Our educators and staff will keep working tirelessly to provide meaningful learning experiences and our students will continue to be the heart of every decision we make. We will seek creative solutions, make the most of the resources we have and remain steadfast in our commitment to preparing our students for their success in the future. We recognize this is a difficult moment for our district, but we are grateful for our community that values education. We will continue to engage with the community and share updates and work together to find a path forward. So now more than ever, we appreciate partnerships and the advocacy that we have for our students in that. So, thank you and remain very hopeful for the future and we'll continue to navigate and keep going forward to make sure that we are able to have a great education and make sure our students are successful when they leave our school doors. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to recognition and thank yous. Dr. Mueller.
Okay. April twenty-first through twenty-fifth is Volunteer Week. We have many volunteers in the School District of Holman, actually hundreds of them, I would say, when you start thinking of those that help us on field trips, to those that help in the buildings each and every day and those that just step in when help is needed. So we just want to recognize all of those volunteers, thank them for helping us in our school district and making a difference in all of our children's lives. And then, secondly, we have this evening is our last meeting with Keven Zilke. He's our student rep and he's been a wonderful student representative and he's done a great job in representing our student body and he's brought many great reports to the board and that, and we're so thankful for all of his service. And we also, I hope that he got a chance to learn what it's like to sit on a board and how all that works. So we would like to take a moment here to share a little certificate with him and wish him well. So if you want to come around and we'll get a picture with you, Keven. So, thank you, Keven.
Thank you so much.
All right, moving on to reports and discussion. Item nine point one. I welcome Jackie Watry and Erica Schmelzer, sir, from the BGC to provide the BGC's annual Community Fund Report.
All right, hello, I am Jackie Watry. I'm the Holman Area Community Center at the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Lacoste, the Skogen location. With me, I have Erica Schmelzer. She's our education specialist and Sierra Gage is our Youth and Family Service Specialist. So they will also be reporting on their last year while working at the organization and the programs they run. Something else I just wanted to update everyone is our workforce development is they began breaking ground, I believe, two weeks ago at the Erickson Club. They're building a new building there that will be, I guess, utilized for not only our club members, but for the community as well to help career exploration and whether that is going straight to a job, a career, or doing a two-year degree, a four-year degree. It's going to help open those options up for kids in our community. So to start off, our program director, who is not here today, is Quentin Webb. So he oversees our K through fifth grade programming and it has some of our numbers in there. So our averages for the summer program are about one eighty-two with, on most days, it being around two hundred and twenty-five kids. And then after-school program, our average daily attendance is about two hundred and thirty. For Quentin and Sierra and Erica as well, they do go into some of the elementary schools two days a week. So Prairie View on Wednesdays and Viking Elementary on Fridays, or I may have switched those two, but they go there twice a week and they help with lunch and recess support, which has been something we started last school year and is something that we want to continue to do and try to branch off into other elementary schools as well. Community collaborations we do is, I think most people know, but within our building, we have ACE Academy and we also have the Holman Area Community Center. So we try to do some intergenerational programming with the community center while they're there. We've done bingo, we've done movies with them on early release days. We've tried to do other, like, family events with them and one of the big things we do with them is our Halloween parties. You can see the picture of everyone dressed up as Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory. That's all our staff. So we do a bunch of games in the gym and then we put on a haunted house that all of our teens set up. For our after-school programs, we run pretty much, I guess, not strict rotations, but we do activity rotations each day. So each day, or each week, there are themes that our program directors plan and within those themes is they come up with different activities for each day and our members are broken up into kindergarten through second grade and third through fifth grade, which they get to pick between three activity choices for their first rotation. So they can pick a classroom activity, an art activity, or an outsider gym activity and that goes for about forty-five minutes. And then after that, they do an activity called Power Hour, which is an educational activity that is geared towards each grade level. So they are split up into kindergarten, second grade, third grade, so on. And that is something that Erica plans. So it's more so an educational activity rather than just an art activity or a gym activity or outdoor activity. And they get to earn things like ice cream parties if they all participate. So that's usually about every month that they get that. Right now, we just started guitar lessons. So this is probably our, I think, our third year doing guitar lessons. So those are offered for members in fourth grade and up. And Dave's Guitar Shop sponsors it, so each member is able to borrow a guitar so they don't need to provide one for themselves and are able to take it home and practice with them. And then something that's cool is if they do guitar lessons two separate times, they have the chance to earn a free guitar from Dave's Guitar Shop. And something new that will be coming this fall will be violin lessons. And then for our summer program, obviously, it's a lot longer day, so there's a lot more we can do throughout the day, but it still consists of those field trips and activity rotations in the afternoon with the morning being an activity called Brain Gain, which is very simpler to our power hour. So they do an educational activity that Erica plans for them based on grade levels. And then something we've done in the past too that we hope to bring back is we've done Pen Pals with members from other Boys and Girls Club. So we've done West Salem and the Erickson Club and we hope to kind of continue that, although it gets kind of tough to get them to really want to write back and forth. And then highlighting our teen program, it's our teen director, his name is Christian Oliver. He oversees sixth grade and up with a lot of our members being the middle school age, so sixth through eighth grade, but we still get a handful of teens that come over from the high school, especially those who have been coming for the past, like, four years. They still enjoy their time there, especially their gym time. So our average teen attendance is about eighty a day. Something new we started this year is called the Up Next Job Program. So it's almost like a mock job for them, but they do earn a stipend at the end. So what this all encompasses is there is a application they have to fill out, there is an interview process, they have to provide us with references. With the majority of them, they can be like club staff, but they go through that whole process and then ultimately, we only have so many spots. So they're either told yes, they get the job, or no, they do not, but they still have more opportunities to do it because we'll do it each semester and during the summer. But with that, they set, they go through an orientation as you would in a normal job. They do expectations for what they would need to do for a schedule and they set that up and they have to make sure that they're following their schedule and coming, you know, to work on the right, on the right days and at the right times and then have to call in if they're not able to make it and all those things, just to help them get ready for, once they get a real job. And then the goal is, is that they gain all those skills and they can also then put us down as a reference for when they get that, when they apply for another job. Something a lot of our middle school members really enjoy is when we put up our volleyball and that's on Wednesdays. So we try to do some co-ed leagues or just the girls when they want to play is, that's just something they look forward to every Wednesday and if it's not up, especially on early release days, they get really upset, even though it's super crazy and they see how crazy it is. We also do club-wide teen nights. So this year, we only did one. We've done usually two in the past, but we just had one two weeks ago, which was March Madness themed. So it was a three-v-three tournament. So members from our club were able to pair up with someone so they didn't have to feel left out or nervous or anything about it. But they would get paired up from two other members from another club and they would form a team. And then they did a tournament, but then there was also different games that members could participate in that didn't want to be in basketball. So we had Minute to Win Games and other things they could participate in.
All right, and then I'll touch on the Sales Success Program or Tutoring Program. So I'm the education specialist, kind of in charge of all the tutoring and then planning those educational activities that Jackie talked about. We have about sixty kids in the program right now, ranging from seventh grade to kindergarten. And then there's also drop-in time when the teens get there if they want to work on homework. We usually get about ten to twenty kids a day, depending on who's there and how many tutoring assistants I have. And those, we have four, including myself. Two are UWL education majors, I think they're both sophomores. And then one high school student who's graduating this year, so I will miss her very much. But then I also plan Power Hour and Summer Brain Gain, which are more STEM-based activities that are really just like helping kids grow their brain, like, whether they realize they are or not, but also including some math, reading and writing too.
I will touch on the Youth and Family Services Program. I've been in, I feel like we've had the Youth and Family Services Program at the club for about a year now with me in it and what that all entails. So I have individual caseloads where I work with members one-on-one, working on skill development. I currently work with two members right now. I also do group sessions. So over the summer, I did a Smart Girls Group focusing on healthy relationships, especially with those, it was third through fifth grade girls, so things can get pretty tense, especially with our third grade girls. I also ran a group called Operation Avengers this fall with four boys from the fourth grade class and we focused on skills such as impulse control, assertiveness, all of those kind of things, just building up their skills with a lot of hands-on activities and practice where they can apply these skills. New this year, the YFS Program started monthly initiatives to kind of target some things around mental health. So in October, we focused on depression awareness and what we had teens doing is we integrated a walking challenge with some psychoeducation on depression. I believe in total, we had about forty-seven, maybe a little bit more teens participate and logged over four thousand minutes walking and that was just clocked at the Boys and Girls Club. They could be walking in the gym, walking in the hallways. They got really into it. And then in January, we targeted anxiety and stress and focused on decreasing screen time. And I think we had about seventeen teens participate in this initiative and seven of them actually reduced their screen time. And to help them reduce their screen time, just offered activities or psychoeducation around coping skills or mindfulness activities where they didn't necessarily have to use their phone. And then this past March, we focused on healthy relationships. So this included our juniors and our teens. So in total, we had fifty-seven, fifty-seven members between the teens and juniors participate in activities, two for juniors, two for teens, focusing on different aspects of healthy relationships. So that was connection, friendship, all that kind of stuff. And so then, lastly, I run a Smart Moose Program and I started this last spring and had some members go through and I, we started it up again in fall and I focused on our K through second grade members in the fall. And I think I had about six or seven members in that group. And this spring, I am targeting our third through fifth graders where I have six members currently in it right now. And that focuses on healthy decision-making and then also sprinkles in some awareness about substance use as well. We just want to end by saying how extremely grateful we are for the school district's support, their communication and all the collaborations we do. And we're super excited just to continue that and anything new that we can do to help support each other. Thank you.
All right, any questions? There's no questions for you today. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item nine point two. Prairie View Elementary Principal, Dr. Nick Weber, Weber will present highlights from the school. This item is for report only and will not appear on a consent agenda.
I'd also like to thank our Boys and Girls Club crew. Our students look forward to seeing you every Friday and to be quite honest, I look forward to seeing you every Friday. Your team is absolutely awesome, so thank you so much for the partnership. Good evening, everyone. First of all, I know I'm not here in person very often, but I want to assure you and our family, Mondays are for popcorn and board meetings on the couch, so it is nice to see you in person. And thank you for the opportunity to talk a little bit about Prairie View and all the great things going on. I just wanted to start by sharing a little bit about our motto this year. I think I've alluded to this in the past or over the past year, but our motto this year is the ripple effect. And each of you will be passing or getting a blue card that we call our ripples at Prairie View. And really, the intent is to get specific about recognizing students for things that they're doing that make a difference, that have a ripple effect on others. And it speaks to a larger philosophy of getting away from more transactional, in transactional items for doing the right thing and more of a transformative relationship that we hope is longer-lasting. The ripple effect has also been a part of how I recognize staff, how I ask our PTO to recognize teachers. So I'm sharing that with you tonight and maybe you can think of someone that you'd like to share a ripple ripple with. I wanted to share one ripple that came to mind that one of our parents wrote for one of our teachers. I took out names, of course, but this was a more significant ripple and I think it's pretty special when someone takes the time to share gratitude. "I'm writing to express my heartfelt gratitude for Mrs. Simonson, our wonderful second-grade teacher. Her kindness, care, patience and unwavering support have made a significant impact on my child's learning experience and overall personality. She dug deep and was so gentle with my son while we figured out some learning challenges. She was his number-one fan. It brings tears to my eyes as I recall the growth in our child. He is a completely different child academically and emotionally. Mrs. Simonson's dedication to her students is evident in the way she creates a nurturing and inclusive classroom environment. She goes above and beyond to ensure that each child feels valued and encouraged. Her patience and understanding help even the most hesitant learners thrive. This was our son. As a parent, I am truly grateful for Mrs. Simonson's commitment to fostering a love of learning and building character. Her positive influence extends far beyond academics as she also teaches important life skills such as empathy, positive self-talk and resilience. Our son was so resilient this year and worked really hard both in the classroom and out. When he is faced with a challenge, he defaults to positive self-talk and affirmations. This would not have happened without Mrs. Simonson. We are fortunate to have her as part of our children's educational story. My children are better because of her and we are better parents because of her. She holds a very special place in our hearts. With a grateful heart, Prairie View parent." Now, I know not everyone takes the time to speak up and share those types of thoughts, but that's a great example of the ripple effect and how it goes beyond just what's happening inside our school, but speaks to our larger school community. I am proud of Mrs. Simonson, of course, but those are the kind of things happening all the time in our school, in all of our schools, which are just so full of goodness and that's important. You know that and our community knows that and we tell that story over and over. The other day, in a data meeting, which is just a structure in all of our schools where you talk about student achievement, student success, and we get a team of teachers around the table to talk about what more we can do to support students. During that meeting, a teacher brought up the idea and reminded me, reminded our colleagues not to put any student in a box. And I just paused and thought, yes, what an important message. At the beginning of our school year at Prairie View, we invited, I invited the local musician, John Smith, who's one of my favorites. If you have not heard of John Smith, I encourage you to check out his stuff. Absolutely awesome writer. But he wrote a song and shared it with our Prairie View staff. The song is called "Don't Put Me in a Box." So I thought, there's another example of a ripple that was lasting and enduring this school year. So it's kind of full circle. These are just a few. The bullets on your, you see on the screen here, very random. There's much more and you might argue, I see state testing there, that's a ripple. But I'll just talk briefly about these bullets. Certainly, if you have questions about anything else happening at Prairie View, I'd love to take questions too. Family engagement, that's something that we've tried to be real intentional, intentional about this year. I think we are every year, but the intentionality behind some of these events and the great people in our building that lead these deserve some recognition. One of them is Snuggle Up and Read and that really was not spearheaded with me, to be quite honest. I deserve zero credit for that event, but Mrs. Zerflu and Mrs. Hubbard, who is our lead nutrition, our nutritional team leader at Prairie View, came up with the idea about inviting families in to get a breakfast and then go to the library or go to the library and read a book together. It was such a hit with our younger students that we're doing it again in April for our older students. PTO Bingo Night, which we held at the Holman Legion this year. So I want to thank our Legion for the partnership and, and the donations they gave. I was a little hesitant at first when our PTO board said, let's move it to the Legion for reasons that I don't need to speak of, but it ended up being an awesome, awesome event and we had over two-hundred-and-fifty families show up there. Everything remained appropriate. It just was a really great event and they raised lots of money to support our school and our PTO. Sip and Paint is the, kind of a tradition in our building. Mrs. Wink and Mrs. Flynn are our teachers, do an awesome job of inviting families in to paint and have juice boxes. I didn't make it this year, I made it last year and it just was so, so neat. And we talk about the importance of SEL, being intentional with SEL. I truly think there's no better way than promoting art and getting families in, doing that with kids. So what, what a shout-out and ripple from Mrs. Wink and Mrs. Flynn. Family picnic, which I believe, which all our schools do. The turnout for our family picnic every year is quite, quite amazing. Our families leave very thankful, amazed by how we can pull that together. And, and one comment last year was, there's school going on here. How are you hosting this event? This event would take weeks to plan. And then we turn it around in thirty minutes and everybody's back to school. But a lot of people work really hard to engage our families with the family picnic. State testing, I just want to mention because our teachers work so hard, not just during state testing, but work so hard to prepare our students, not just for the test. In fact, we often talk about at Prairie View, encourage kids to do their best and forget the rest, but we do so much more for the whole child and we don't overemphasize testing. And if that has a negative impact, I'm going to live with that because kids are so much more than these test results. But they do take it serious and I'm very proud of everything they do to prepare our students for testing. Our Sunshine Committee this year has really amped it up as far as building morale in our building. The other day, maybe some of you heard, they actually turned our lounge into what we called the PV Salon and the teachers have given manicures. I did offer to sit down on the other side of the table and paint some fingernails, but no one took me up on that. But those are the kind of things they've been doing throughout the year, just to make sure our staff feel valued and it has made a huge difference. Our Discovery Centers, which I'll show you some pictures of here in a minute, will be getting upgraded this summer. We don't know the exact timing on that, but they'll be getting a little facelift, kind of modernizing the spaces, accessing technology a little bit easier. There, those are spaces at Prairie View and Sandalake that have pretty much the same footprint and they are used all day, every day. But with the additions or with the upgrades, we'll be able to maybe access STEM a little bit more easily. So thank you for your support in, in doing those projects. I did offer to sit down on the other side of the table and paint some fingernails, but no one took me up on that. Those are the kind of things they've been doing throughout the year, just to make sure our staff feel valued, and it has made a huge difference. Our Discovery Centers, which I'll show you some pictures of here in a minute, will be getting upgraded this summer. We don't know the exact timing on that, but they'll be getting a little facelift, kind of modernizing the spaces, accessing technology a little bit easier. Those are spaces at Prairie View and Sand Lake that have pretty much the same footprint, and they are used all day, every day. But with the additions or with the upgrades, we'll be able to maybe access STEM a little bit more easily. So thank you for your support in doing those projects. We have some upcoming fun Environmental Awareness Day this week, which we get into, have a lot of guest speakers on different environmental lessons. We have some fun visitors, some educational visitors, but that's a good tradition in our building, and students have a blast with that. And then our Field Day that Mrs. Burnt organizes towards the end of the school year is another opportunity for us to bring in volunteers and really have fun, and hopefully the weather cooperates. Act 20, again, maybe not something you're thinking as a ripple. It was good to hear you ask questions of Senator Path and all things education. But we viewed Act 20, for the most part, as a positive in our building when it comes to holding ourselves accountable, to making sure we sprint through the finish line with supporting students who need it. We don't like some of the paperwork. We don't like some of the stuff that comes with a mandate such as that, but the intent is good, and the majority of our teachers realize that there's some good changes with it as well. These are, this is why we do what we do. When you see these smiles, I'm fortunate I get to work in an elementary school. This is, this is what I get to see every day. This is what our staff get to see every day. This is an example of a quarterly celebration. We went to Seven Bridges Park, and then the BGC was gracious enough to let us in there because it started raining. So just a fun way to get out of our norm and go celebrate the great things over the last quarter. This was in a fun event, again, organized through PTO. Mrs. Bartels took a lead on this, who's also a fourth-grade teacher this year. And wow, I will never go through a drive-thru again and take for granted the service I receive. During the first shift, I was at the drive-thru, and I slowed that line down so much because I'm a talker. And that messed with their computer system, and then we'd get behind. And simple order for fries and a soft drink is not that simple. So please have grace for those people that are working at McDonald's or any fast food. But what a neat opportunity for us to get out and partner with the Courtesy Corporation. And we had so many families show up, and the staff that were there volunteering had a blast. So that was a pretty neat evening. These are just some images from Snuggle Up &amp; Read. We had so many people that I had to make an announcement that it's okay to be on the floor spread out. That's a good problem to have. These are just some images from PTO Bingo Night. And the Holman American Legion was absolutely awesome partner for us at this event. These are images of the Discovery Center I alluded to. The K-1, so kindergarten and first grade, will have an enclosed room as the Discovery Center as part of the upgrade. The other two wings or spaces will stay open. Part of that is so the bigger kids can, the whole grade can access the space. And these will be used for STEM activities as well as our typical activities, such as supporting reading, small group, whole-grade level guest speakers. So lots of multi-use. And this, these are images from our sip &amp; paint. And I can tell by the images, these are a lot, lot more experienced or better artists than I was. We don't have many after-school activities, but this is one example of one of them we do. Lego Club for our fifth grade. We also have nice partnerships with our high school for French opportunities, Spanish opportunities, just in small doses to get some exposure. I'd love to see those partnerships expand, but that's where we're at, where we're at right now. And that's all I have. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer.
I have one and a comment. So first, I think I'll say, in every organization that I've experienced with, culture in the organization very much starts at the top. So I think the idea that so many things are framed around recognizing the good and the positive starts at the top. So thank you for building that culture at Prairie View. I think it's really apparent in the slideshow that that's cutting across all the areas in the school. And then the question I was going to ask is, I'm curious, Prairie View was affected, I think, more than some of the other schools by the new boundaries? I'm just curious, like, what you're hearing from folks, parents, teachers about that?
Yeah, good question, and thank you for your comments. I'd say there's, anytime you talk about families leaving, it's emotional. So our staff recognized we needed to do something to balance out the four buildings, especially Prairie View. We're busting at the seams when it comes to space. But if there's anything I would report back, it's the connections that our staff made with these families that they know now need to go to another school. So it's just being positive for the kids and being positive for the families, but realizing that something needed to happen. I don't know if that answered your question, Maggie, but...
Yeah, it does. I was just curious if there were any themes or anything bubbling up often, but it sounds like from, I mean, from my conversations, there's a lot of recognition that, yeah, it needed to happen. And like also that little bit of bittersweet, you know? Like when you're leaving a school you love or facing transition.
Yeah, parents that did reach out to me were pretty understanding. And I think that's a testament to the communication district-wide on what was happening and why.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment because you're the, you're the third elementary school presentation we've had now. And I am, I'm just, I've just been really impressed across all three of them so far on the amount of community and family engagement our elementary schools have. Because if you don't have kids in that school, or you're not following the Facebook page or whatever, you don't necessarily know about all these things that are happening. And you, you have a ton of things happening, and so have the other elementary schools as well. So there's just a lot of family engagement going on, and that's really good, so.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I don't think there's anything else. All right, moving on to item 9.3. Executive Director of Finance and Operations Julie Holman will present the 2024-25 Third Quarter Budget Revisions. This item will appear on the April 28th Consent Agenda.
Good evening. I'm going to pull up one other one, sorry. I'd like to just show the cute kids on the last slides in the Snuggle Up &amp; Read while I talk about this. It's much more engaging, so. Good evening. I'm here this evening to present on the 24-25 Third Quarter Revisions or Budget Adjustments. The information is for changes that have been made through March 31st of this fiscal year, using the best information that we have available at this time. The screen shows the Notice of Change in Adopted Budget. This is the summary that gets published in the Lacrosse Tribune, and it only includes those lines that actually do have a change over what was adopted by the Board last October after the annual budget hearing. So I'm going to go down and just share the summary. You are also provided with the five-page DPI summary format that you're familiar with, which includes the two audited years, the original budget from last October, and the third quarter revisions. And so we'll start with the General Fund. The General Fund has a revised budget plan deficit of $2,531,000. This is an increase of just under $73,000 in the deficit over last October. The General Fund revised revenue is $56,220, $56,220,000. This is about a $940,000 increase over last October, and it is primarily due to interest earnings. If anyone can predict interest earnings these days, come see me because that's, we always predict low. And as the feds continue to kind of hold rates or not reduce them maybe as much as we thought, even like two years ago, they were going to do, you know, so many per year, and that really hasn't happened. And so we do have more interest earnings than estimated in General Fund, which is good news. We also have an anticipated larger June Medicaid settlement from, settlement from '22-'23. So those are always two years in arrears, and when you get that settlement, it goes into the General Fund ten instead of Special Education, as opposed to during the year, claims reimbursements go to the Special Education Fund as revenue. So that Medicaid settlement estimated to arrive in June is over $200,000, so that does increase our General Fund revenue as well. And then we have an adjustment up for some open enrollment in aid that was underestimated last September, October. On the other side of General Fund is the expenditure budget, and the new total is $58,752,000. And that is an increase of just over $1 million over the original budget. It does include an additional $573,000 in the increase to Special Education inter-fund transfer. This is primarily due to the recommendation that we reduce our aid from the 33.3% in statute to 29.6%. That's a pretty significant decrease of over $300,000 just in the aid that we estimated this year based on prior-year expenditures. General Fund also has an increase due to an additional $284,000 related to instructional service payments. This is primarily due to open enrollment transfer out. So I just mentioned open enrollment transfer in and a slight increase in revenue. Open enrollment transfer out to other Wisconsin school districts is also impacting our expenditure side of the equation. There is a decrease, you see on the, the summary here, in instruction from last October, and that has to do with actually a shift to some of our Act 20 expenditures from instruction into support services. And then also an increase in support services, which you see also on the screen. We have a total net change in support services of $415,000. The Common School Fund, which is our library aid, we get that information every January. So we're always budgeting conservatively, so we don't overspend the Common School Fund. And then we get a notification in January, what they think our May or June payment will be. So we've always kind of not, we've conservatively budgeted, so our LMCs are not overspending. And then we update it after the January communication. So Common School Fund was originally budgeted at $200,000 this year, and the actual allocation is $260,000. And just for some context, because this keeps going up, I wanted to let you know, back in '21-'22, our allocation was $156,000. So in just that short time span, we've gone from $156,000 to $260,000 in aid. A DPI does like to see that spent in the year that it is received. And if it's not, we are required to isolate it in fund balance. And so every year during the audit, anything that's carried over is isolated and then returned to our LMC directors through allocation the following year. So that does make quite a difference in the support services, both on the revenue side and expenditure side, based on that increase from last October. The General Fund fund balance estimated for June 30th is $15.7 million, or 26.84% of General Fund expenditures. The breakdown there is approximately $1.5 million in restricted and committed reserves and the balance of $14.3 million in assigned and unassigned designations. Next up is the Special Projects Fund. This is our Fund 21, commonly known as the Fundraising Fund or Gifts and Donations Fund. Small adjustment here to include the carryover balance for Family Literacy Night of $3,500. So that's a minor change there, decreasing their estimated fund balance slightly for June 30th. And then next is the Special Education Fund or Fund 27. Revenue and expenditure budget increases to $11,252,000. This, the revised expenditure budget is the same because these have to net zero with that inter-fund transfer as of June 30th. And the increase is due to additional contracted services and additional student supports. The inter-fund transfer from the General Fund to Special Education is estimated to be $7,459,000, and that is an increase of $573,000, as I shared when I was talking about the General Fund expenditure budget changes. It's also a net result of the increase in services, an increase to IDEA revenue from prior-year carryover of that federal award, and a decrease, as I spoke of, of the Special Education aid for this year. There's also an estimated decrease in current-year Medicaid aid, so for claims that are being submitted during the current year. The Capital Projects Fund in the summary does include Funds 42 and 46. In the changes, it only includes Fund 42. As you know, we bonded for the balance of the referendum recently, and that settled in February. And so there is a revision to the interest earnings in Fund 42 of $75,000, and that is just through June 30th. It'll continue to be invested as much as it can be because we're going to be using that money this year as we finish up those projects. So an increase in the interest earnings on the Capital Projects between that settlement and June 30th. And the estimated fund balance in the Capital Projects Funds for June 30th is $17.2 million. It is completely dependent on the construction progress and the estimated draft schedule. So if they're accelerated, we may be paying out more and have less fund balance on June 30th. And if we're slower, then more of it'll fall into the '25-'26 fiscal year. And then finally, the Debt Service Fund '39, the Fund 46 Long-Term Capital Projects Fund, and School Nutrition Fund and Community Service Funds do not have any changes since October. Are there any questions?
Can you go a little bit, or can you talk a little bit about the decision to lower the anticipated Special Education reimbursement to 29%?
Sure. DPI is recommending that all districts do that, and so they sent out estimated aid revised for this year. So Special Education aid is, is based on prior-year actual eligible expenses in Special Education. And so the initial estimate would have been, like, after our audit, when we knew all of our prior-year eligible expenses at the 33.3%, and then in the fall, they basically said it's going to be prorated because the amount of money that the state has allocated is some certain, which means it's a pot of money, and it doesn't pay all districts enough to meet the 33.3%, which is why there's an ask, again, to try to do with some sufficient allocation or reimbursement and so that you, they can actually commit to the percentage that they say. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So last year, we didn't quite get 33.3 either, but much closer than we are anticipating we will get this year.
That's an interesting decision by DPI to make that suggestion.
I think they're just giving us a recommendation so that we don't find out, you know, in June.
Very pragmatic, but also wish our...
Probably not going to stretch because of inflation that's hitting everything is also in, you know, it's hitting Special Education. So all the districts probably spent more than was initially anticipated two years ago when the biennial, the legislative session made that percentage decision. Anything else? All right, thank you.
Oh, it's just a revision, that's why.
Okay, moving on to the Consent Agenda. For the Consent Agenda, the Board has been furnished with background materials on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. Would any Board member like to pull an item out of the Consent Agenda to be discussed and/or voted on separately? I would entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as provided.
So move.
Right, motion by Chris.
Second.
Second by Kadisha. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the Consent Agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right, moving on to the Board Debrief. I will call upon Board members and ask you to present any comments or committee remarks. So tonight, we'll start.
I would just like to say thank you to the Holman Boys and Girls Club for...
I would just like to say thank you to the Holman Boys and Girls Club for their programming updates tonight. I think that the Holman community is very lucky to have this type of facility in our community because I was able to witness a few weeks ago the collaboration that is taking place between the Boys and Girls Club, our instructional services that are there and the Holman Community Center. And it has just been, I think, a, a great benefit to our community.
All right, thank you.
I want to talk about what's happening at the school. So it's been a hot minute since we had a meeting. So student council's blood drive went gone, it went well. We just had state forensic just happen. I heard there's tons of perfect scores and tons of awards. Overall, did pretty well. Prom was last Saturday, students enjoyed it. They said it was really well organized, they loved the snacks and the music was better this year. And I want to thank all the volunteers, prom committee, teachers, everyone who came together to make this happen. Spring break is this week, 17th to 21st. Solo Ensemble is the 26th of this month. And then student representative election is tomorrow. That is between Danny Ott and Abby Holtie, both are current juniors. And it leads me to my farewell. And I just wanted to say that I'm honored to have been on the board with all of you guys. This is one of the best experiences I've ever had. It's an unreal position that I got the privilege to have been part of. I want to say thank you for y'all being so nice to me, hearing what I had to bring to the table and laughing at my jokes. I'm so proud and part of a community that is so involved and, you know, they try to make a difference no matter how insignificant, I can't speak, how insignificant an problem might seem. Once again, I am really thankful for this opportunity.
All right, Kadisha.
Yeah, I just, I'll just take my time today to say thank you to Keven and congratulations on graduating. It's been a pleasure to have you here on the board with us. So best of luck in your future endeavors and definitely keep us updated on what you're up to next. Thanks, Keven.
All right, Chris.
I guess same, thank you for your service, Keven. We appreciate having you on the board. Thank you to Jackie and her team for coming out and sharing some of the positives that Barbara mentioned about the Holman, or the BGC. And all my, my kids go there and they really enjoy working with that staff over there. And then to Dr. Weber for sharing his positive insights on Prairie View.
All right, Maggie.
I will echo the gratitude to Keven. I will miss sitting with you, chatting with you before meetings. And you're gonna, you're gonna do great things. And then the other thing I was going to add was that the Wellness Committee had the final meeting of the year on April 2nd. We did finally complete the comb through of the policy, made some changes. And the plan is to reconvene in fall and look at setting some goals around implementation of the updated policy.
All right, Bridgette.
I mean, everything's been said, but also just a special thank you to Keven for your amazing work this year. You've been an absolute pleasure to be on this board and you will be very missed. So congratulations.
Okay, yeah, I also, Keven, I want to say it's been a pleasure sitting here at this table with you all year and listening to your report outs. And I know we've had some good conversations as well. I also want to, I know the referendum didn't end up the way we wanted it to end up, but I just, I just know that within this district, there was a lot of people that put a lot of effort into this referendum. And I just want to especially thank Julie Holman and, and Dr. Mueller here for everything that they did to get to that point, so. All right, that's all I have. Moving on to item 11.3. The Board has been provided notes from the February 5th Wellness Committee meeting. So please take a look at those. Also, the Board has been provided with updates to Policy 8510 Wellness that the Wellness Committee has advanced to the Board for consideration. If a Board member has any questions regarding this policy, they should reach out to Dr. Mueller prior to the April 28th meeting where the policy will appear on the Consent Agenda for approval. And then item 11.5, election results. The results from the spring 2025 election have been canvassed and are official. Barb Wench and Kadisha Islam have been reelected to three-year terms on the Board of Education. So congratulations to both of you. And then also the operational referendum failed to pass. Moving on to our Board meeting schedule. First up, on April 28th, there's going to now be a Finance Committee meeting at 5:30 that evening, followed by the Board Organizational Meeting at 7:00 PM. Then on April 30th, there's a Board Workshop at 6:00 PM. On May 7th, there's a Policy Committee meeting at 5:00 PM. On May 12th, there's a Board Meeting at 7:00 PM. On May 24th, it's graduation at the La Crosse Center at 11:00 AM. On May 27th, which is actually a Tuesday, there's going to be a retire reception at 6:00 PM, followed by a Board Meeting at 7:00 PM. And then lastly, on May 30th, it's the last day of school. So tonight, we do go back into closed session again. So I now ask Board Clerk Maggie Smith to read the motion to move to closed session.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby moves to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c) considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government, governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, in this case, an individual employee's compensation.
Maggie has moved, is there a second?
A second.
Chris has seconded to move, move to closed session, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I ask Maggie to take a roll call vote.
Barb Wench.
Yes.
Jennifer Deek.
Yes.
Kadisha Islam.
Yes.
Chris Lao.
Yes.
Maggie Smith, yes. Bridget Todd Robbins.
Yes. All right, we're moving into closed session.